Good evening, everyone. We will call our Wednesday, January 27th, 2021 Fayetteville City Council's special meeting to order. At this time, we welcome all those who are joining us via live stream or social media or other methods. Also, we would like to do a roll call for our council members who are joining us virtually. So for city council members who are on the line, I will call just for clarification as to who we have. Who do we have? It's Councilmember Waddell?
Present.
Councilmember Ingram?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Present, sir.
I think that's, that's all. Okay. All right. Well, welcome, councilmembers. At this time, we'll have item 2.0 is the invocation. Ask that we would please stand for the prayer. Well, ask that our councilmember and brother and pastor Reverend DJ here, if he would pray for us. If we could please, after that, repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord Jesus, we thank you this evening for another opportunity to call on your name and give you praises and honor for being so good to us. Lord, we thank you for how you've taken care of us through this day. We continue to ask you, Father, to look over not only Fayetteville, not only the Fayetteville City Council, but councils all over the nation and councils and cities all over the globe. During this horrible time that we're going through, Father, we still believe, at least I still believe and know that you are healer. So, Father, right now, we're calling on your name to come down and heal families, Father, those that are going through bereavement, those that are going through illnesses. And, Father, we're calling on you right now in Jesus' name. And, Father, as we go through the meeting tonight and the items, subjects that we're going to discuss, Father, we ask you for our hearts to be open to hear, to understand one another. Let us always know, Father, that we don't have all the individual answers in our heads and not all the answers are in the public, Father. So, we ask you, Father, let us to come together in understanding when a resolve is to be. And, Lord, we surrender all of these things to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Item 4.0 is the approval of tonight's agenda. Counsel, if we could have a motion to do that. It's a motion by Councilmember Hare. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I actually have raised my hand to have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. And just to kind of run over the protocols for tonight. Maine is kind of helping us with the virtual. So, Maine, if you see, councilmember with, that needs to be recognized, let me know. Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if the council would be amenable to moving item 5.21 before item, I'm sorry, 5.2 before item 5.1. If we could hear item 5.2 before we hear item 5.1.
Okay, so is that a friendly amendment to Councilmember Hare's motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare, is that acceptable to you? All right. So, it's an amended motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Waddell, as clarified with the exchange of item 5.2 with item 5.1. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. I will call you for your vote, those who are joining us virtually. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting this evening. Motion carries. Item 5.2. So, counsel, the purpose of tonight's meeting, certainly I appreciate the council and those members of staff who are joining us for the special meeting to discuss a couple of things and how we move forward. As we know, we have had some tumultuous times in this community, not only during the tenure of this council, but previously in the preceding years regarding the market house and recently regarding the mural that was painted around the market house. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting, as we look at this, is to talk to the council, do an after-action review on a few things regarding the mural and the sea and talk about the steps forward, as well as to talk about the different options for the future of the market house. So, there may be a short-term and a long-term conversation or discussion pertaining to both of these items. Since we have moved item 5.2 as it relates to the market house, as we've talked about this over the last seven months, we have had conversation on a committee level. We've had conversation internally with staff and some of the public discussion we've heard, not in a synchronized manner, but in a way in which we communicate with our constituents, and we'll continue to do that. And so, before we get into the crutch of the discussion tonight, I'd like the citizens to know that there are things that we need to do with our processes and with our staff that gives direction and clarity for them to be able to provide the answers and the information and the resources we need to communicate with you and to make ultimate decisions. The way that works is that the manager, because there's 10 members of council, has to have a consensus to be instructed to engage a staff or resources or staff time or city or staff resources into bringing back certain information. And as it relates to the market house, basically four items have been, different options have been discussed that were emailed out to all of us on yesterday. Just to recap this, of course, option number one, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the repurposing of the market house. And I think there was an official council action to instruct the manager to come back with options of repurposing, whether to convert it to a museum, African-American Cultural Center, or some other options to change the purpose of what it is to something different. Option number two was a recent conversation that came up with discussing that with Councilmember Davis, who's also an engineer, but others in the community who are in engineering and construction who understand that buildings or structures that can be moved or relocated. And what were the possibilities that this particular option could apply to the market house? So, relocation will really be the focal point tonight, which I don't think we've taken any official action on that as a council to instruct the manager for more insight on that. Option three is demolishing the market house. We've heard as a council from, there are some members of the community who feel offended by the building, by the structure, and have asked that the market house be demolished. And certainly, we know that that is a huge undertaking for the city and the citizens. And we, as a council, will have to make some decisions about that and how a decision like that would impact our community. And then, option number four is the status quo, which I think is the most, I won't say egregious, but the, it's the one that we've used. And oftentimes, if you continue to do the same thing and expect different results, they have a name for that. But status quo would be to leave it as is, to not do anything until the next big crisis happens. And so, as we go through those tonight, I'll recognize Councilmembers Ingram and then Banks-McLaughlin. And then, there is a proposed question I wanted to ask the council for some consideration in these items. So, I'll go with Councilmember Ingram and then Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for laying out those options before us. And so, just allow me some time to clearly articulate what I am trying to ask. It has been brought to my attention by some concerned citizens that there had maybe in, a lack for better words, play for this body to vote to demolish the market house, yet have members of our General Assembly on standby to block it. Now, I'm not stating this to determine whether this is, this so-called play is fact or fiction, but what I'd like to gain some clarity on for the sake of the citizens' education and my own are the roles of other entities that they may have in this as it relates to doing anything such as relocating, demolishing, or repurposing the market house. So, my questions are, one, as far as the deed is concerned, who owns the market house? Two, what is the HRC and what role do they, could they potentially have in any of three options mentioned? And what role could members of our State General Assembly have in any three options before us? And for clarity, I am only interested in the city attorney, city manager, or whom the manager chooses from staff to answer this, as I believe we all need to know this answer, this information, if we don't know already.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I need to repeat my questions, I can.
Okay. I think, I think we have it. So, we'll go to Mr. Manager or Ms. McDonald, if you all can clarify those questions.
Thank you, Mayor. As I understand it, the first question was, who owns the market house?
Correct.
The city of Fayetteville owns the market house. It is on the National Historic Registry. Two, what is the role of the HRC? The market house is in, is a part of the city of Fayetteville's historic district. And so, any option involving the market house would likely require a certificate of appropriateness, which would be made to the, presented to the HRC for a decision by the HRC.
And city attorney, before you move forward, can you explain what the HRC is?
That is the Historic Resources Commission, which is a commission of the city of Fayetteville, which is responsible for, for lack of a better definition, responsible for managing and preserving the historic structures within the city's historic district. Yes, I didn't know if there was another question.
And there was another one as far as our State General Assembly is concerned?
Yes, ma'am.
What roles? Thank you.
At this time, I, cities are creatures of the state. I do not know at this time that there would be a specific role. I'm not aware of a specific role that the local delegation would have, but that's not to say that they may not become involved. At this point, I just don't know what that, what that could be, but certainly that's a possibility.
And just for clarity, so I'm making sure I'm tracking this information. So, if this council voted to repurpose the market house, the HRC could say, we're gonna, we're gonna put a hold on this. You're not gonna touch it for as long as we say you're not gonna touch it. Or the state delegation could, I guess, what passed legislation to do that. Is that true?
I would say that the HRC could conceivably issue a stay and that stay could be for up to 365 days, but would not be indefinitely.
Okay, and the stay is, you can't do anything, correct?
I'm not saying that. I do not know, I cannot at this point envision what they could do, but certainly it's a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's not any, any questions, I would like to make a motion.
We do have one other question.
Okay, well, after the questions, I would like to make a motion to demolish the market house once everybody's had a conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hare?
Say the same thing that the attorney said about the appeal process of the one year. That was what I was gonna, yeah.
All right. So, let me clear the boards. So, counsel, as, before I go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, part of what I intended to ask the manager to do as he laid these four options out was to check in with council if there is a consensus on these and to, and to take some action to give direction, as we, as we've talked about. So, before I go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, who I think wants to make a motion, is Councilmember Kinston, you have a question or was that a vote or?
I wanted to make a, make a comment first.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My comment is with the status quo, is I do want to make a motion first to ask Banks-McLaughlin if I could go ahead and make a motion before she does for, to remove the status quo.
Okay, well, we don't have a motion on the floor, but if you, if you defer it to her, I can recognize her and then I'll recognize you. Is that what you're agreeing to?
Yes, sir.
Banks, councilmember, you okay with that?
My motion is after the discussion?
Well, well, only thing she was asking is that if she could be recognized first to make a motion on, on option four, and then I'll come to you for whatever motion.
Okay, so again, after the discussion, she's gonna make her motion and I'll follow.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
All right. Councilmember Waddell and then Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, I guess, to, I guess specifically to you as the chair of this, this meeting. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin has brought this before this council three times now. I'm interested in knowing, aside from the removal of the wording at the market house, what has changed whereby now we are ready to entertain this conversation? Because when it was brought before, the, there was a staunch opposition from several members of council who all referred back to there needing to be some degree of more research. And I never held to that premise, but I just want to know what has changed to bring about that, this ideology and this, this sharp, in seemingly a couple of weeks, this sharp pivot, particularly given the fact that I think that one of the last things we heard was a dialogue about the potential of the Department of Justice being brought in to facilitate this dialogue. So, I really, I'd just like to get to the, to the bottom of what facilitated the sharp turn of thinking.
Well, I can't speak for any other council members, but if you're asking me my position. So, number one is chair, when the process is, is that if there's an item introduced that's not on the agenda, it takes a certain amount of votes to inject that, and the votes were not obtained twice. So, you may have to ask each individual council member what the premise was behind, whether they voted to support or not agree with that. I can't speak for that, but as, as the chair, that's, that's the way I recall that happening. As relates to the Department of Justice on February the 5th, that is not related to these actions. They basically have been following this conversation in the news, which has been exhibited statewide. Also, have heard that there are other organizations who follow, who said that they could possibly help in the facilitation of a conversation about it because they have a program that they think would be applicable. So, until they come on February the 5th, which I had planned to make sure that they meet council and speak with you, I don't have the details as to what that is, but I don't think the two are necessarily related to the council's actions. But Councilmember Banks and Kinston can speak for themselves about.
Well, I certainly appreciate your clarification on the Department of Justice. And so, as I don't expect an answer from each council member, I do put the question out so that it will be a matter of our public record, that I, I do recognize that Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, each time she brought this question to the council, not only adhered to our policy, but also, again, met strong opposition and being able to bring this conversation to the table, to entertain it for a vote on what we would do as far as the market house was concerned. And very specifically, her ask at that time was what, that we take a vote on essentially exactly what you're saying, which was the future of the market house. We were asked to vote on the demolition of the market house, which would have then given us an opportunity to say yes or no and decide from there what our next steps would be based upon what the council decided, determined. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, I do want to applaud you for being ahead of the curve ball with this conversation and continuing to push for us to make this decision. And I do say to, to the remaining members of council, particularly those who never supported her ask for that vote, it would be good to understand why the pivot, because I, like Councilmember Ingram, have heard tale of, from our community, heard tale of the fact that there are conversations that are happening with the General Assembly to hedge the bets of council members who wish to appear to support demolishing this structure, but are in fact relying on some other agency to step in and prevent that from happening. And so, I thank you for giving me a moment to share and I yield the floor.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. Based off of the responses that I received from city attorney, I'm a little bit, and let me say this first, I'm prepared to vote regardless. I always have been. But I'm a little bit concerned because it seems to me we don't have a clear sight of what happens or what can happen once we vote. We don't, it's, it seems like, I, I think, I would be more comfortable if we had all information ahead of us. We spent a good deal of time together in our external and internal committees working, and we did not, we didn't have this information about other entities. And so, like I said, I'm prepared to vote, however, but I'm just a little bit concerned for, on the citizens' behalf of them expecting us to vote and that be the vote and what is going to happen. And so, I don't know if there needs to be something said where, yes, this vote will happen, but we can't control anything outside of what other entities do. But I just wanted to make that clear. That, that is a little bit concerning to me. And I will say, I did bring it up in our external committee that we probably needed to have a discussion about if, if the citizens say demolish it. Say this would have went to a, an election cycle where it was on the ballot, a referendum, and the citizens voted. Is that what the council is gonna do? I posed that as a question and we didn't, we didn't talk about it because I guess it wasn't important enough to talk about it. But I'm glad we're having this discussion. But knowing that other entities can step in, I think, I think we need to exercise public conversations, I guess, with these entities to see what, what partnerships can be there in our efforts for what is laid before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram and Waddell. Councilmember Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a statement that kind of piggybacks on what Councilmember Ingram was saying. Through the committees that we had, I know there was been several options with the survey. We talked about public forums. We talked about the referendum. My concern is that initially it was said we needed to get the public's opinion. And so, at this point, we're making the vote tonight, but we're not getting the public's opinion as we initially said. So, I just wanted to address that portion before I make a motion tonight.
Was that a question for me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, I guess we've been, the purpose of tonight is to give direction. And, and what's changed in these three options since we've had it was the relocation option, okay? And so, now, as it's been articulated several times, that Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin has attempted to add her motion of discussion of demolition to the market house to the conversation on numerous occasions. So, the council will be, tonight is the venue for that. And if the, the votes are there, everybody will be asked to make a decision on that. So, I really can't speak to the maturity or the prematurity of that. The other two options to me, relocation and repurposing, are directional votes to give the manager the option to engage resources and staff and contractors, architects or engineers, to be able to answer the questions of, is this possible? How much does it cost? Where would it go? What is the process? Those are the things that, that those two will address. So, the other subsequent motions that may come in between yours or hers, I guess that, you know, that's a good point for you all to, to explain when you make the motion. So, I hope I answered your question. Councilmember Hare?
Oh, you know, Mayor, I was gonna support the, the motion of removing the status quo. But I would like to just make a statement as we start having this conversation tonight, which I am so ready to have. But I will say, I speak to residents, my, my personal constituents. I also speak to folk all across the city. Just last night, I had a, a meeting of one of my communities and of those that were present, their opinion and desires or their thoughts for the market house was everywhere just last night. So, it's, it, it's, it sometimes can be somewhat challenging when you have some constituents that are gonna say one thing, some residents that are gonna say something else on a subject. So, it's, it's, I'm hearing subjects, I'm hearing opinions from all across the board.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Hare. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. When the mayor assigned those task forces, if you will, those committees, external and internal committees, we had been discussing on the external committee different options and ways that we could go about dealing with the market house. We had went far as to contract a company to get a survey, if you will. Then, we were looking at getting a company to get a online vote type of concept. We talked about town hall meetings, if you will, to get input from citizens. We talked about a lot of things on the external committee as to, you know, what is the best way to get the feedback that we need from citizens. That's what we were working on. A lot of the committee members felt like, I think it was maybe all of us, that the numbers were not high enough to get a, a good, accurate feed from the community, maybe with 800 people doing a survey. So, we wanted to do something different to try to get as many people, citizens of our city, to have some input. There were a lot of different ideas that went out. And in the midst of that, Councilwoman Banks-McLaughlin twice made that motion. I felt like myself personally that the motion to, to tear it down was premature at the time because we were having all of these other discussions as to what we're going to do to go about, you know, getting input from the citizens. So, to me, it was kind of, you know, against the grain of the committee as to, you know, making a decision to tear it down versus all the other things that we were. versus all the other things that we were spending time with on this external committee. Looking at, you know, spending $20,000 of taxpayers' money on a survey, that probably wouldn't have given us the information that we needed anyway. It was kind of like putting the cart before the horse. Here we are today, tonight, to make that, make that decision in this special meeting as the mayor has put forth three to four options. And so this discussion among us, I think, is necessary. And to make that vote is necessary also. I haven't heard anything about, you know, the state committee or the senate or house or any other options. But I was listening to the attorney, and she said tonight that the historical, the HRC could have the power to stay our vote for a year. I'm not clear on that. I don't know all the ins and outs of that and why that they would stay and what would happen within that year of stay. But then again, that's another hurdle. And that speaks to the sensitivity of the market house and this issue of tearing it down, repurposing it or removing it. And so I welcome this conversation, and I welcome this vote, all votes at this time, so we can very well clear everything up going forward as far as the option of the council. And I still would love to hear what the people has to say. But, you know, we've decided to do this and go this way. I know that we won't know all the options as Councilwoman Ingram have laid out in her concerns. I just, I don't think that we're gonna know what's gonna happen after we vote. But I'm ready to vote, and I look forward to whatever hurdles or obstacles there are ahead of us to get this particular issue out of the way as a council to go forward for the future of the city.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Madam Attorney, just to clarify something for the listening audience and for council members. The process with historic resources or HRC is the same as it would be if any other person applied to do something to a historical structure. Just because we're the city doesn't mean that this is an odd process. And in that process, they can approve what you're asking to do. They can deny it. There's an appeal process. But then they could stay it for what you're saying for a maximum amount of a year. Okay, so I didn't want it to be confused that this is something extra that we're having to do because this is the market house and we're the city and we're talking about it. This is something that would be done if this were an old building, an old house, or something that was on, considered historic. So just wanted to clarify that for those watching and others. But Councilmember Kinston, and then I'll go to Banks McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to have status quo removed off of the marketplace or the market house options.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Kinston to remove option number four, which was status quo, which was remain the same with no changes. There was a second by Councilmember. Who was that? Who was that there? I saw Councilmember here, y'all. He seconded about 15 minutes ago. But you just jumped in there, didn't you, Doc? All right. So there's a second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on this motion that's on the floor? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
Councilman Wright?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that we demolish the market house.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin to demolish the market house. Councilmember Waddell, is yours a question or a second?
It's not a second. It's a request after this concludes, after this particular motion concludes.
Okay, all right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, and this is to demolish the market house is the motion. Council, okay. Councilmember Ingram?
Red.
Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Councilmember Davis?
Red.
And Councilmember Wright?
Red.
All right. Madam Clerk, that motion fails eight to two. Those voting in favor of the motion, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Councilmember Kinston. Those voting opposed, Councilmembers Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, here, and Waddell. Got it? Okay. All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the recognition. I would like to make a motion that we give this to the voters and place it on the ballot as a referendum and allow them the opportunity to be heard in how we make this decision.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to place this item on the ballot, which would cease all other discussions by council. There's a second by, Councilmember Kinston, is that a second or a question?
That was a second, sir.
Second. Second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? And council, I will say that I would like to say during the discussion phase that I am not necessarily opposed that the information goes to the ballot. I do believe in order to have anything that you can ask the citizens to make a decision on, on the ballot, that they have to have the information. When it was time to do the Parks and Rec bond, we knew exactly how much we were asking them to pay in the additional fees, and we knew specifically what the projects were. And we even talk about that three or four years later after the fact of the projects that were explained to the voters. So we gave the voters a lot of information. If we stop this without the research, in my opinion, and this is why I am gonna vote against this motion, I believe that we're shortchanging the citizens. This is the easy way out to do it. And it's a half-hearted approach at giving them the information that they deserve to make a sound decision, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since I made the motion.
Sure, I will, Attorney McDonald's throwing a red flag up, and then I will come to Councilmember Waddell and Ingram.
Mr. Mayor, if that is the interest of the council, I will need to research that. North Carolina has some very specific rules about referendums, the form of the question. And I think certainly if it is feasible, it would be considered a non-binding referendum. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you for that, Attorney McDonald. And I do take exception to the layout that this is the easy way out. I think that what I'm asking for is what I have heard come from each of the council members who indicated that they were in opposition to the original question when it was brought by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. I kept hearing, we need to hear from the citizens. We need to hear from the citizens. The most effective way to hear from the citizens is the same way that we hear from them when it is time for us to run for election or reelection. And that is absolutely what you're saying, is to give them all of the information and then allow them to be able to make a decision. And so, and I also don't see it as the easy way out because what this has the potential to become is also a barrier for the reelection of many of the people that may seek it coming up in this next term. Because your performance, our performance, may very well be tied to whatever the citizens think about this particular item should we place it on the ballot. At least that's what I've heard consistently from some of the members of this board about some of the other items when I say let's take it for a vote. And so really what I'm asking for is I'm asking for the citizens to be heard. I'm asking for them to be heard in the most effective, the most verifiable way that we have at our disposal. It's been brought to our attention that a, to do a survey would not have pulled enough of the voices. And it's been brought to our attention that to randomly ask people doesn't guarantee that they're necessarily constituents who have the authority to be able to weigh in on a topic like this. And so I just wanna, I want to be very clear in saying that I don't see this as the easy way out. And I do see it as being able to meet the objective of what many of the council members have identified as being able to hear from the constituents.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I wanted to ask city attorney, and also I think Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Waddell just clarified for me a bit, but I'm gonna ask for clarity. The city attorney, non-binding means we, citizens vote by landslide to repurpose or demolish it. The city council then can say, well, we don't have to do it. Is that pretty much what that means?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, so the Mayor Colvin, you stated something to the effect of when we did the bond, well, when council years ago did the bond referendum, you had to gather citizens' input and give them education. And so I can't imagine us sending something to bond referendum and then not having education around it. That doesn't necessarily make. I don't, I didn't see that or I didn't feel that with this motion. But because I have had a number of constituents ask for this, I will support this option, as I will probably support repurposing it. But I, I'm, I'm, I think the citizens should be heard as well.
I need to clarify because it's implied that my statement means that I don't believe that an item like this deserves to go on the ballot. My purpose is saying that I can't support it is because I believe that we don't have enough information at this juncture to do it. And I was involved in the Parks and Rec bond, which was the first time a bond had passed in a long time. And it took a lot of education. You had to be able to explain what the ins and outs were. And people have a lot of questions about it, so let me clarify that. So I don't want you all to speak for me as to what I believe. I'm clear about that. But I just will not support this because I don't think it's the appropriate time. Not to mention Attorney McDonald not having the information about the language, specific questions that have to go on there and what they're pertaining to. So I'll clarify that. But I'll go to Councilmember Wright?
I have my hands also.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I got you, sir.
I kind of concur with what you're saying as far as the referendum. The language on the referendum, and I don't know basically if we put it there, given where we are as the council. Because I thought at one time that a referendum might be the way to go. But hearing now that, you know, the questioning and what the attorney has said, it could turn around and then it could still be left up to the council to make the final decision. Will that be an exercise of good time or wasted time? I don't know. But at this particular point, I'm not prepared to support the referendum.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, I have a question for Madam Attorney. I just want clarification. I want to make sure I heard her correctly when she said that even if we place the referendum on the ballot, if some who are on council presently don't win reelection, that new members who may be in the seats of those presently sitting would not be bound by this referendum action? Is that truth? Yes or no? Did I understand that correctly?
I'm trying to.
Is this asking for clarification on non-binding, too?
It's.
It's clear, right? It's clear? Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. Well, you don't have to answer. I just want to make sure I heard. I want to repeat it back, so I heard what I thought you said, was that this referendum would be non-binding, and any new council could decide to not or to follow what is being voted on. Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, I also asked you to make a motion after this motion, if possible. Thank you.
Sir, I'll come back to you. Council, Mayor Protim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate kind of what has been said about referendums. And especially, there was three of us sitting on council when we were doing the Parks and Rec referendum. So what I will say to that is the mayor is very correct. We had a lot of information. We had a budget. We knew how much everything was gonna cost. And we sat here till 12 o'clock at night saying, okay, what are we gonna do with this part? What are we gonna do with this part? What are we gonna do with this part? And I'm gonna go back to kind of what the mayor said is, you know, you keep doing the same thing. You're gonna kind of keep getting what you get. And I'm not against a referendum at all, not one bit. But we have to have the knowledge of, you know, if we, if it gets voted to tear it down, how much is it gonna cost? Who is gonna pay for it if we decide it's on the ballot to move it? How much is it gonna cost? How long is it gonna take? Is it legal? So a lot of questions have got to be answered. And I applaud the council tonight for taking two votes that are helping us move the process forward. So we had four options sitting in front of us, and now we're talking about two. So if a referendum comes back up and we have the knowledge and the information, I think that's a time to have the discussion. But I will yield my time and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so there is a, no more questions. There's a motion by Councilmember.
I do have my hand raised.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to add some specificity to my motion.
Councilmember Waddell, if you can give me, let me recognize Councilmember here.
You got it. Yes, sir.
And then I'll come right to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I concur with what I have been, what I've heard about the referendum vote, which I could support with all of the data. But one question I just, I do have. I was really looking forward to receiving the information this evening on the agenda from our city manager. I mean, there were conversations on relocating and I think repurposing, if those were the two directions that we had given him. And do, I just want to know, do we plan to discuss those this evening?
We do, sir. We had, as we started talking about this when we rearranged the order of the agenda, Councilmember Kinston and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin put motions out early. So we'll dispose of these, the motions that are here. And now we have a third motion that was put out by Councilmember Waddell. After those things have occurred, certainly we can use this as an opportunity to ask the staff whatever questions they want to ask about any of these items. And then we'll move on, because I did want to keep it timely tonight.
I did want to hear.
Okay.
Those options.
I'll circle back to you. If you can press your, your red button when it's time again. That way I won't get you confused. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give some specificity to my motion. I am very specifically asking that we take this to the voters and allow them to decide whether they wish to see the market house remain or be demolished. Now, my last statement about this motion is, we have, should this move forward, we have six months to educate the voters about what this would look like to help them be able to make a decision. And the statement to say that there's all of this information that we would need beforehand, the reality is if we put this on the ballot and we allow the people to vote, whether it's binding or not, this council or any council in the future will never be able to say they've not heard the will of the people. And so it will be up to this council or any council in the future to determine what they wish to do in response to the will of the people if it's not binding. And so to harp on the fact that it may not be binding, well, it wasn't binding for the Parks and Rec bond that there be something put east of the river as many residents felt they had been promised. And, you know, we just have to answer to that. So once we hear the will of the people, it's up to us to determine what we're going to do with that. But I think at this point, we've danced this dance in a circle for a long time. And it's, you know, my belief is that we need to not, we, it looks like we need some help making a decision on which way we need to go. And it looks like the best help that we can receive may very well. On which way we need to go, and it looks like the best help that we can receive may very well be from the voters and so. I'm asking that we go ahead and just take the vote, if it passes, it passes, if it fails, it fails, and we continue the conversation.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman, and again, to clarify, I'm not sure that, uh, those who vote. Uh, against this say that they don't believe that that's an ultimate option, but tonight, the motion's on the floor. Uh, by Councilmember Waddell, seconded by, I think, Councilmember Kinston to, uh, put this on the ballot. So, Council, I'll look to you for your votes on this motion at this juncture. Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Uh, green, wait, yes, green.
Okay, Councilmember Waddell.
Green.
Councilmember Wright.
Red.
Councilman Davis.
Red.
So, Madam Kirk, that motion fails, uh, six to four, those voting in favor, uh, Councilmembers Waddell. Uh, Ingram, Banks McGlaughlin and Kinston, those voting opposed, uh, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Wright. Colvin, Jensen and Hare, uh, Councilman Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, uh, that we, um. That we request direct staff to bring back options, uh, that, um, pertain specifically to repurposing. And or relocating the market house, and that within that motion. Uh, we remove the tear down option off of the table for per- for, um, purpose of future discussions. That we eliminate the tear down option as an option for the market house as part of that motion, for clarity, I'll say again. Uh, my motion is that we direct staff to bring back in sixty days, ninety days, whatever, and, and in real time. Options for repurposing slash relocating, and that we remove, tear down. Solely tearing down the market house as an option.
I, I would like to offer a, a friendly amendment, but I also need some clarity, um, I don't.
Well, well, hold on one second, uh, Councilmember, let me see if we have a second for Councilman Davis.
I, I was gonna, I'm planning a second, but I, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to.
Well, hold, hold on one second, uh, Councilman Ingram, you, you weren't recognized, so, Councilman, uh, seconds by Councilman Dawkins, uh, discussion on the motion, Councilman Ingram. Councilwoman Ingram.
So, I, I don't, I cannot support, support this because it takes two options and push, puts both options together. Um, and I, from my understanding, we were going through each, we were going through each option as a vote. Um, and also, from my understanding, our direction to staff that Councilmember Wright made in our work session. Requested staff to come back in about ninety days, so I don't know if you took thirty days off of that to, to speed it up. I, I'm just trying to understand, but to, to, to ask that two options be together, I don't think that's. I just don't think that, that's a, that's a good motion, I think those two motions need to be separate.
Okay, well, that, that's his motion, so he would have to agree to.
I was trying to offer in a friendly amendment.
Alright, um, Councilman Davis, did you wanna respond to that before I go to Councilmember Kinston?
Um, y- yes, I guess, I guess my response is a question, what is egregious about allowing them to bring back? Information about both of these at the same time, because one, only one of two things will take place. So, what is egregious about bringing them back at the same time, and at the same time, removing both extremes of the conversation off of the table finally. So that we can all invest energy into unifying the city and creating a place, this situation, the market house. That everyone has input on, so I'm trying to figure out what's egregious about getting information on both at the same time. What's the problem with that?
For, for me, what is egregious is we are, we are entertaining the idea of moving. And potentially having to pay to move, uh, a historical monument and. When I look around at our city, let me just speak for my district, when I look around at my district. And I look at the money that we would potentially have to spend, and if you're gonna get me to vote. To support relocating when I know dollars could be spent elsewhere. I, I don't know if, if, if that's, if that's the best way to spend our, our, our dollar. However, if we are talking about repurposing as option one says, repurposing as museum, center, art gallery focused. That, that seems to be a bit more, bit more benefiting for this city as far as tourism. As far as comfortability of our people's story being heard. But to say, let's look at relocating a market house, which I'm pretty sure will cost millions. I, it, I'd rather just take it off the table, we don't have that money. And I, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote, it's okay.
Alright, I was gonna say, Councilwoman, I invite you if, if you have some other ideas about it to do it, but right now we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, may I say one last thing, the motion is simply to have staff come back with information for clarity. This is not a motion to commit any dollars at all, this is a motion to provide structure, details. Clarification on these two options, that's all this is, this is not a commitment to either, I'm, I'm open to either. I'm open to what the people want, but I want us to, I hope that we can make this vote to streamline this conversation, to add structure to it. And then allow staff to come back and tell us what the numbers are, if you're specifically right, then I'm sure we'll all vote not to do it, but this is not a vote to do. This is a vote to solidify the table for conversation around these two options or these two topics, that's all this is.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Kinston, Hare, and Waddell, and then we'll try to bring this to a vote, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, um, in looking at the options that we had, we started out with four, then we had the fifth one to be added for the ballot. I'm gonna say this, salt and sugar looks the same, um, when you, when we eliminated demolishing and the status quo. Then, we've already at, we've, we haven't gotten to the point where asking staff to do something. So, in order to ask staff to do something, I'm not gonna support this vote or this motion. Because I think at this point, we need to go through and either eliminate, um, what, some of the options that we, that are. And then get staff to look at it, and then bring, bring us back an option, but right now, they look the same and I can't support that.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm, I'm following, uh, what you just said, I just wanna make sure I'm not misunderstanding, so. Item number four, status quo was a affirmative vote to remove that as an option.
That's correct.
And it passed, option two, the motion by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin to demolish failed. Okay, and so that only leaves the two, which he's asking for information, so what, what is?
Uh, he's asking for information to come back, what we've been voting on is either to make a decision.
Without the information?
Well, the way that, that I understand that he's saying is to have staff to come back to either repurpose or to relocate. I don't.
So are you saying make a decision without the information?
I think, yes, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, alright, alright, thanks, Councilman Hare.
Thanks, Mayor, um, I, I guess I'm ready to vote too, but what my concern is. What my question is, is the same question that I asked earlier, we had already given the city manager. Direction to bring us back, uh, some information, which we haven't even gotten to tonight. So, I would like to hear that, I mean, why, why does that have to be a part of a motion?
It doesn't, we're, we're trying to really, eh, the, the problem is, we, we haven't been able to get into any. Conversation because there's been motion after motion after motion, so, uh, if there's a question you have about that, Doug, you wanna give us a. Well, well, right now we have a motion I need to dispose of, then if there's something behind that, Council. Before we make another motion, because that's what's happening is that we're making motions after the discussion is over with a different motion. That takes us in an entirely different direction, and so to bring this back to some purpose, which is what the purpose of the, the. Meeting was tonight, is to have this conversation, and so if there's questions, we need to allow that before you make a motion, if you would, and so. Uh, I'll leave some space in there for that, Councilman Hare, so you can ask the manager for whatever clarification you need, let me catch these other two questions, I think.
Oh, just to make it clear, Mayor, on, on my, on my, on my support or, or non-support of the, the, the motion. It's difficult for me to support the motion, uh, because I wanna get this clarity of information.
Count, um, Mr. Manager, you, you, Councilman Hare has a question about the repurposing direction you got from us, can you give him a status on that?
We, we asked for that months ago.
No, sir, that was at the January fourth work session.
January the fourth.
Yes, sir, and, um, uh, staff, um, did meet, um, and we, um. Brains, did a brainstorming session to kind of look at, uh, realistically what repurposing the market house would look like. Um, on site, um, as you all are familiar with the building, it is in the middle of a very active and busy traffic circle. The, it is not ADA accessible, um, because of that, there's no elevator to the second floor, which is the air-conditioned space. And the one bathroom is also on the second floor, and years past, it did serve as offices for everything from the Chamber of Commerce. To, I think, a bicentennial, um, committee, right now it is used for tours and for just special events. So as it stands alone as a singular building, second floor building without an elevator. With one bathroom in the middle of a very busy traffic circle, there aren't a lot of active daily reuse items that you can use at four. However, the council, in their discussions on January fourth and subsequently, there was a lot of discussion about is, could it be used as a center? To tell the real history of slavery and particularly the African-American experience here in the community. And as that, um, it could function, but again, those same limitations are, are present. It is not large enough to really do that on a full-time recurring basis, and so some of the things that, um, we would look to explore. Um, uh, if the council continues this as an option, would be, could it be used in, at its current location? As an annex to another location, hopefully very nearby the market house, um, so that a person could say, this is almost like a gallery. And you would have a, a museum or center somewhere very close to there, that would be the main, um, location. And then you would also have an opportunity to go to the market house as a separate gallery, but related to that center. But again, there are not a lot of, um, options to, to, um, repurpose it for an active space. Because of the limitations which are there, but staff has not completed the work in looking at how it might function as a center. On, one of the things that we also understood from council's action on January fourth and actually going back several years. The council has been very clear about trying to de-emphasize the market house as the center of, uh, the city's, um, civic life. Um, we're in the process now of giving you options to redesign the city's seal, to take the market house off of that, the same with the city flag. And the same with the video that we played at the beginning of the meetings that also had images of the market house on it, so that'll be forthcoming. You're also aware of all of the conversation the council has had recently about removing the seal from, uh, the market house emblem from our trash cans. And from cars and vehicles, and so one of the goals that we looked at in the repurposing as well is. Um, is this, uh, creating of a museum or center as a standalone, is that in, in, in and of itself. Re-emphasizing something that the board has said they would like to de-emphasize, and so looking at those options to create a museum. Where currently we don't have one, we have the Transportation Museum and we have the North Carolina, um, Veterans Park. And some other parks that we use and we do programming there as well, but the number one option that we heard again was to try to create. A center or a museum or an art gallery, um, as a, not as a standalone. But as an annex to something else that is already there, and hopefully, with more work, we'd be able to come back, hopefully with some type of business plan that would. Facilitate that, but again, the limitations of the building and its location really do limit, um, any serious or significant repurposing. As it currently stands.
Uh, and so, part of what I recall the direction with the manager was being, in addition to these things that he's been able to, to gather was. You know, budget and, and possibilities and even schematics or just some design ideas if, if we go that far, if that's a road you wanna take. But that was some very useful information, Councilman Hare, did he answer some things that you wanted to know? Okay, alright, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Davis, in your estimation, was there a location in District Six? That you had your eye on to move the market house, or is there another location that you had in mind for the placement of the structure? If, if this were to, to move forward?
I don't have any specific, um, locations that I'm one thousand percent connected to, um, I've thought about. Um, near the Civil Ri- the, uh, the, uh, Civil War Museum location, um, there have been a number of statues moved to other places, I mean. I offered it as an, an option, I think this body is responsible for putting ideas out there and allowing people to chew on them. Allowing people to not say yes or say no, it's generic idea without, um, any specific commitments to it right now, so. Um, what I did wanna reemphasize is that I wanted us to move away from both extremes, one being we're not gonna do anything with it. The other one being we're just gonna tear it down, and that's why it's a part of my motion, so that we would focus on moving forward, so that's, that's my thinking.
Thank you for that clarity, and, and, and I will say, um, as a, as a result of that. The only, in my estimation, the only location that would be able to be a consideration at this point. Would be, as you referenced, the, the future site of the Civil War History and Reconstruction Center, and if that were the case. Then that would require some agreement and some support of the Civil War History and Reconstruction Center, and I've not heard us broach that topic. Since the very beginning of this term, quite possibly even the end of last term, and so my concern is that moving it. Might not be the right answer either, because where, where do we put it, and if we don't have at least some broad stroke of where. A structure like that may go, the dollar amount is a, is a huge impediment, get, especially given the fact. That revenues are projected to be sharply down based upon the fact that we are still in the midst of a global pandemic. And so to, to be looking to re-divert, divert funds like that, unless we're looking, again, at partnerships, then there have been conversations with. The General Assembly or some other legislators as to how we may be able to get dollars to do this, then I, I just don't, I, I don't, um. I have more questions than I do have answers, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I could just finally say, um, I think that's the intent of directing staff to bring us these answers back. That's, that's, that's their job, they get paid full-time to do that, I don't think that the financial downturn you're discussing might be a reality. Mr. Toler would be able to tell us that, but this is what this is about, you come up with an idea, you present it, you see if there's a consensus. And then staff brings us back the details and tells us if it's a good idea or a bad idea, that's what we do as, as an elected body, so that was my only intent.
Mr. Mayor, I need one note of clarification.
Well, I, I'm gonna circle back to you, I still have three lights, and, uh, unless you wanna say it quickly, is it something?
I'll be very brief, I'll be very brief, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding correctly, Councilmember Davis, are you indicating that you don't think that the budget? Is going to have some deficit based upon this pandemic, I think that's what I heard you say.
Alright, we've got a motion on the floor pertaining to, uh, what the, to adding relocation. Adding staff to engage staff for relocation, let's try to keep the conversation focused tonight, the meeting tonight is about the market house. And the market house murals and how we move forward, so, let's try to keep the conversation, uh, in, in that regard, so, I'll go to Councilman Wright. Banks McGlaughlin and Ingram, then we need to turn the page, guys, we're into an hour, uh, on that, you're good, okay, Councilman Wright.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, alright, Council, Councilmember. I'm sorry, sir.
No, um, my questions were answered in the last comments.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Ingram, did you have something in regards to the motion?
Yes, so, so, for, what, what I know the motion to be is that Councilmember Davis is asking us to dead all conversation of demolishing. And status quo, the first two motions did that.
So, I think his motion is to, the status quo was unanimous and that passed. The, the motion for demolishing by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin to demolish it failed, and he's in, in. Eh, eh, from my understanding, he's in, in, uh, included in. in, in, from my understanding, he's in, in, included in his motion, the, the right to, for council not to discuss that as an optional, to take that off the table. Councilmember Davis, did I reflect that?
You reflected it perfectly, Mr. Mayor, that we not discuss simply demolishing it again as an option. That's exactly.
Okay, but the council just voted that we wasn't going to demolish it. But okay, so my next piece is.
No, ma'am, that, that was not what happened, Councilmember. It was, the vote, the motion on the floor was to demolish, was not to, so, so this is a negative motion, in other words. So the, so, but either, either way, this is his motion. It has a second. So what is your point on that?
Councilmember Hare stated earlier, he asked about the information coming back. And so what I'm asking is, and I said it earlier, on January 4th, we gave staff direction from Councilmember Wright's motion, in 90 days, bring us back information of what repurposing the Market House was to look like. Is that right? Am I, or is that wrong?
That, that's correct.
Okay. So is what we have here, is this all the information that we was going to get in the, in that 90 days?
I don't think the manager is finished collecting information. He just summarized what he had to this point. Mr. Manager, can you clarify that question?
Really, is there really a need to, for us to be asking anything else tonight before we get that information?
Well, you have the option to make that decision in this vote or another vote. But, but right now, we're going to bring this discussion to a close. There's a motion, it's been discussed. Any of these options, except number four, requires some financial commitment, which would be to demolish, repurpose, or relocate. The day, the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to bring back staff information for relocation. None of us are in here, with the exception of one, our engineers, so we don't know what the costs are. And so in order to, to be able to answer some of these questions, the motion on the floor is to bring that information back, the way I understand it. Councilman Wright, did you have something that was specific to the discussion on the motion on the floor?
You just clarified there, Mr. Mayor, because, because we asked the staff to bring back information pertaining to.
One thing.
Repurposing. That was specifically for repurposing. We're talking about now a relocation.
Right.
And so Council, Councilman Davis expressed that information, and I just wanted to make a friendly amendment because I see that there's confusion based on repurposing and removing, and that we've already asked the staff to bring back information for repurposing. And we hear that they are, they have some information and maybe are able to bring additional information in the future. And my friendly amendment to Councilmember Davis is to specifically ask for information on removal, because the, the staff has already been directed to bring back information on repurpose. And I think that, that's where the.
So, so what do you call in removal? Relocation? That's what he's talking?
I'm sorry, not relocation. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
Councilmember Davis, restate your motion briefly, please.
Yes, sir. If, if, if I may, if I may restate my, my, my motion. My motion is that we ask staff to bring back the same figures, numbers, proposals, options for relocating the Market House within the same time. He could brief them at the same time that he briefs repurposing. So we would merge those two initiatives at the same time. And when we get the 90 days, if he can confirm that staff can pull this off, we will receive a presentation that encompasses options for repurposing in place, as it sounds like, or relocation to another location or another site. And to add, finally, that we remove discussions of simply tearing it down from, from, from these discussions, because we've had votes on, on it, and it's, I just want to take off the table.
All right. So, so thank you for clarifying your motion. There's a motion by Councilmember Davis as stated. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. We've discussed it. Council will look to you for your votes for this. All right. Council, Councilmember Ingram?
Red.
Councilmember, Waddell?
Red.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
And Madam Clerk, that motion carries six to four. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare. Those voting oppose, Councilmembers Banks McLaughlin, Councilmembers Waddell, Councilmember Ingram, and Councilmember Kinston. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Council will move to item 5.01. And before we do that, Council, can there be, Mr. Manager, can you give us some expected time check-ins? You may, I may not have all information back. And Council, I want to say this too. Some of this, to receive this information, he may need at some point to come to us and I'll, I'll ask him for that process for some, some budgetary authority. Now, we all know that time is of the essence with, with moving this along. The community's asking for it, so, and we're trying to work through it as best we can. Some of this, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Manager, because of maybe a professional service, RFQ could be used, and, and if it's under a certain amount, are you able to expedite some of this process? Can you give us some timelines?
Yes, sir. The largest issue would be having an assessment done of the building to have it moved, and then getting a quote for a relocation. A lot of that also would depend upon, be depended upon having conversations, which I would need the council to help with, about a suitable location to have it moved. If you're moving it just two blocks versus you're moving it up, Haymont Hill, or you're moving it close to the river, a whole lot of different locations. And so the first one will be to engage professionals to help us identify how it could be moved without necessarily disassembling it. But either way, we will still get quotes for that. And also, we'll be engaging probably some local architects who are on our on-call list to help with some of the drawings that could envision what the Market House might look like as a museum. So that, I think, as some, several of you have said, that it's hard for people to envision what it might look like differently, either in place or somewhere else, if people don't have some examples to, to reference. And so my, my, my plan would be that at a minimum, at a minimum, of every two weeks, that you would have a written update from me on our progress, probably more frequently than that as we move along. But want to be able to document this for council and that way if there, and, and the public, something that we can share with the public as we move along. So that would be my plan. And you are correct, we are able to engage certain professionals, as long as it's under a threshold, that's typically under $50,000. But I think that with, with the council's direction tonight, we will be clear and be able to come back with a game plan in a couple of, couple of days, and definitely have a report to you guys every two weeks.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Council, moving to item 5.01, Market House mural. As you know, I wanted to bring this back to us tonight. When everything took place a week before last, it was after the tragic events that had happened in DC. I think you know that we've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it in, in the community. And so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to see what the next steps are to move forward. I asked the manager in preparation for tonight's meeting to kind of give us the, the timeline of action that was taken pertaining to the mural's installation and repair, and then compared it to the timeline that was utilized for the decommissioning of it. And so I think that my personal opinion is, is that, you know, the governmental body is expected to be consistent with its actions a lot of times. And sometimes, along the way, there are things that, that we can't predict to come up and, and may not allow it to happen. But for the most part, I think there's a real effort made by the government, in this case, the city council and the city government operations, to be consistent. We hold public hearings in the same fashion. We hold special use permits in the same fashion. And not to say we don't get it wrong from time to time, but we try to, for the most part, follow the same pathway, regardless of who the applicant, regardless of what the subject is and where we, what we think about it personally or not. We try to do that. And it, obviously, as looking at this, on June 8th, during a council meeting, during the second Monday in June, council had a discussion about the mural installation. June 22nd, a special meeting was called and the council voted to authorize the meeting, the mural's installation. June 30, eight days later, it was actually installed. July 26, it was vandalized. July 28, it was restored from the vandalism. There was another incident of vandalism that I think was, was repaired by pressure washing. It didn't require extensive repairs that it took. And that happened sometime later after the restoration. And those were the steps, five different occasions, two public meetings, and actions were taken publicly for the installation. For the decommission, the conversation was had. We've talked about that in the, in the press and otherwise. And on January the 11th, it was removed or decommissioned. And so you can clearly see that the, the path to put it down was not the path to remove it. And so I'm simply asking council tonight, as it relates to this, there were a lot of people in the community who were caught off guard, who were, who voiced their opinions to, for it and against it. But as a governmental body in any form of, or branch of government, let's use the courts, for instance, if, if you forget to read someone their rights, or you forget a step, then there's a mistrial or do-over. And, and I understand that, that this is not the most convenient path. A lot of people say, hey, it's gone now, water under the bridge. But for consistency, I'm asking the council if they would consider reviewing that as it, as it relates to the path that we took to put it down, to the path that we use in the communication and opportunity for citizens to see our action to remove it. So with that, I'll pose that question. And Councilman Davis and then Hare.
Mr. Mayor, after discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Councilman Hare?
Oh, I would hope, Mayor, that in the future, especially things of this nature, not even of this nature, but especially things somewhat of this nature, that if there's an acknowledgement of an action that's going to take place a day or two before, especially like this situation with the removal of the, of the mural, I would greatly appreciate a individual heads-up. I would like to get a phone call, especially something of importance of this, because I would have voiced my opinion one or two days ahead of time if I would have had that opportunity to have that conversation. I appreciate you bringing this item back, and I would really like to be very supportive of if there are some positive actions in moving forward. I would, I think I, I would be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilman Hare. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, Mayor, and I just wanted to make sure I have some clarity. So with the mural, are we looking at putting Black Lives Do Matter back or Black Lives Matter?
Well, what I was proposing, because it was a process issue for me, and we didn't communicate it well to our citizens, a lot were caught off guard. I was proposing putting the same thing that we had. I didn't really have in mind to propose to council different wording, because I knew that took us a while to come to some agreement with that. But whatever the pleasure the council is, but my ask tonight is that for a process that we put this back to the point that it was and follow at least the steps we took to put it in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess my clarification that's needed is, we're, we're saying that the process broke down at, because it's my understanding that it wasn't necessarily procedural. It was just, I, 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 I think if it is a process, let me, let me restate so that I can give a question and not a commentary. If it is procedural, I think that it would benefit us to have a conversation right now about what process was not adhered to, where it was broken, so that we can correct the process, so that we don't make the same mistake again. I, I don't, and I use the, the term mistake very, very loosely, because I don't, I don't believe, and I've not seen anything. There was a public records request done. I've reviewed the documents. I, I asked to be able to see those documents. I'm not seeing anywhere where it was a mistake, or where it was unintentional, or where it is something that, that couldn't have been avoided. In fact, I'm saying quite the opposite, where it was a deliberate decision that was made. There was a follow-up that was made to make sure that the decision needed to be adhered to, and it was a, a move forward. And so I want to, I, I'm more interested, I guess, at this point in having a conversation about what process was not adhered to and should be in the future, so that with any decision that we have on the table, we don't find ourselves in this position again.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, I thought I was pretty clear about it. The process to put it down was not the same process to remove it. All of us knew it was being removed or whatever plausible position we take on that, whether we knew or not, didn't know. This is more about moving forward than pointing fingers and, and looking back, because I think, you know, everybody has to, to address that in their own way. Tonight's discussion was about what do we do and where do we go from here? So clearly, two official meetings, where one, it was discussed, two, action was taken. Eight days later, a contract was awarded and it began installation. Thirty days later, it was vandalized, and two days after that, it was replaced. Fall within the financial capability that the manager has to award and give contracts. So if there's an action after conversation we want to have, I think that that's fine about how all of this works, so that we learn from our mistakes. But on January the 11th, a crew showed up and removed it. Who knew it? Who didn't know it? Who says that they knew it and didn't know it, whatever that case is. But it's clear that the things that I named on the left side of the paper are not as extensive and not the same path that the right side of the paper took. So my question tonight for council is to reconsider that specifically, and to reconsider putting it back to where it was while we go through whatever our long-term and short-term plans are for the mural and the Market House. So that, that's the purpose of the conversation tonight. If you want to schedule a meeting to talk about processes and procedures, you could do that. But the night's meeting is specific to the things that were posted on the agenda. So I hope that helped. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, I'm not understanding why we're voting to put the mural back down if we didn't vote to remove it. That's just one question. And secondly, after Councilmember Davis make a motion, I would like to make a motion, instead of putting down Black Lives Do Matter, I would like to put down Black Lives Matter.
All right. So we'll see the outcome of that motion, but we will have, go to Councilman Davidson, then you if necessary. Councilman Hare?
I'm gonna stand down, Mayor. I was gonna, I'll just listen to the conversation that you just stated, and I'll just stand down and, and, and vote.
All right. Mayor Portman Jensen? All right. So, yeah, Councilman Davis, I'm coming back to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion in light of the lack of, of, of proper following of policy or procedure that was used to put down the mural. I'd like to make a motion that we replace it with the exact same mural as soon as possible, on the exact same mural as soon as possible. I'll make a motion that we do that.
Thank you.
All right. As a motion by Councilman Davis, to restore, as stated, as a second by Councilmember Ingram, any discussion on the motion? Is that a discussion of vote?
That's a.
Oh, discussion, Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, I've, I've been pretty.
You've been quiet tonight.
Yeah, well, that croissant. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple things, and I'm, and I'm going to support this motion by Councilmember Davis. And I, you know, we agreed back in May or June, it was going to be temporary. So I kind of wanted an idea if, if he would add, you know, if it's, we're asking the staff to come back in 90 days, maybe we leave this up for six months, because it is government speak. speech, my understanding, City Attorney McDonald, and being government speech, technically, I think we need to keep it temporary, so I was looking for a kind of a timeframe, and I'm fine with, with six months, I'm fine with, you know, five months. I mean, I would like that to be added to the motion by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Council Lady Ingram. But I also want to thank Councilmember Davis, a great American wounded in action, and I appreciate his service, and I want to, I kind of want to touch on that, I would not support Black Lives Matter, because that refers back to the organization that was started by three Marxists, one and a vowed Communist, and I will not disrespect, dishonor those soldiers laying in that field at Fort Bragg. And so I thank Councilmember Davis for doing that. I also thank Councilmember Wright for his service, and I want to thank Councilmember Courtney Banks McLaughlin, she married a gentleman who I believe is retired from the Army, and Councilmember, Council Lady, Mayor Protem Jensen, wife of a veteran, traveled the world and lived in all Germany and all over the place, as many folks do. So the families that are a, a part of our veteran community, I salute them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Dawkins. Mayor Protem Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say that I can support this. I do think that when we did talk about it, we did talk about a timeline on it. I do want to go back, and I'm, I'm going to make the statement about Councilmember Waddell's statement that she made. I do not think that we had a policy, and I think we need to look at a policy, and if I'm not mistaken, I think that when we put it down, we all talked, we all did everything, you know, we, we let the public in, and I don't think that there was a policy to take it up, and I would like to fix that if we do it. And I have a question. City Manager, is this the first time that you can recall that we did something like this in the city, or has it been done before?
This, to my knowledge, is the first time we've done something like this.
So I, and I can see that it happening again, and I think that we do need to have some type of policy, and that we're learning, and, you know, the biggest thing is, we are human, and we, we, we do make mistakes. I'm human, I make a mistake, but we did not really have a policy of how it went. But I am going to support this, but what I would like to see, and my colleague behind me, was behind me, and we were getting ready to say the same thing, I would like to see where we can have a better understanding, and where we may be able to put this permanently and decide, but sometimes when we go on a motion, I, I totally am for this, but if we're going to make it temporary, I think we need to have the conversation if we want to keep it, and we have to have the conversation if we do this again, to make sure that there is somewhere that we can go back and say, this is the rules we have to go by. So I hope I made sense in that, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for listening to my sidebar conversation with the mayor. I, I would like to have a, I would like to see if the maker of the motion would amend the motion that if there's a timeframe put on that, that the staff can bring back to us a permanent, or, I don't know, you, council, help me with the wording, if the word is...
Permanent options, at the end of the term?
The options in the future for the Black Lives Do Matter, like a mural to go somewhere. I mean, for example, we have been looking over the last few weeks at different murals in different states across the country that are under the same form of heading that we're speaking of tonight. And I would greatly like to see, because I've already sent council at least one viewpoint or pers, or option that I had already sent, it didn't, it didn't get any traction, but I would love that, to have that, so we can directly go into that when the temporary time comes of the mural coming up, then we're already going to another, the location where it can be more of a permanent, somewhat permanent option.
Got you. So Councilman Davis, Councilman here was proposing that if you could incorporate in that motion, you know, kind of like I heard Councilman Dawkins refer to, some timeframe, so that it, it's clear that, that it has a lifespan to it, but, and this is temporary, but I guess he's saying to also, at the end of that temporary time, have some more permanent options. Is that something that you're amenable to amend in your motion, too?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion to say the following. I, Chris Davis, make the motion that we reinstall the mural for a period of six months, and within that time, request staff to come back no later than June 1st. Permanent ideas for a location and type of mural relative to these topics that we're discussing right now, that highlight the sensitive nature of our relationships, fear of racial injustice, Black Lives Do Matter, unity. So again, I make the motion that we reinstall the mural as was initially done for a period of no less than, for a period of six months, and within that time, have staff come back and give us ideas, suggestions, renditions for what a permanent mural would look like, as well as locations.
Thank you. And, uh, Councilman Dawkins, you were the second, you okay with that? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ingram, you were the second, and you okay with that?
I am okay with that, but I did have my hand raised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming to you, I was trying to dispose of Councilman...
Oh, okay, yes, but yes, I am fine with that.
Okay, all right.
I thank both of you all for accepting that.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will say, I thought, I thought it was going to be, come to us as a, a council member request. I, I, I must have read the, the, I guess, minutes from the meeting wrong, but I do want to, as we're, Councilmember Jensen spoke about the, um, Councilmember spoke about the policy, I will say, when we initially voted to put this down, I specifically asked in the meeting, we, this is going to come back to us to vote. So to clear that, uh, policy or no policy, we were told, yes. So, and I will say, it, that's neither here nor there, but I did want to ask, uh, City Manager, as far as marching orders, as to the process, do, did that motion cover everything as for funding? Did that cover it? And who to contract, did that cover it?
Yes, ma'am. I think with, as presented with the motion, is that the wording would go back as quickly as possible. We would telegraph that publicly, and with a eye toward it being down for a minimum of six months, but it would come back to council before that, for you to confirm that, probably. When we also come back with, as Councilmember here said, which would be ideas for a permanent display that would be about the African-American experience and the Black Lives Do Matter, and we would need to find a suitable location for that, so it would be my hope that between now and the next three months, staff would be able to come back to council with maybe two or three options for locations. And once you confirm the location, we would then begin to start working with probably our partners with the Arts Council in Cool Springs to confirm a design. We'd come back to council once we have a design with a budget, and then you would be able to approve that, as well as then the decommissioning of the mural that will be going back around the Market House as it was before. I think that we have enough money to do that.
And Mayor, if I may, I want to offer, I thank you, City Manager. Mayor, I want to offer, because I do think gratitude is due necessary, I want to thank Mayor for bringing this idea to council, to have what I'm gonna call a social justice park. So Mayor, thank you for bringing this to us. He brought it to us in email, but I'm glad to see it's moving forward. So once again, thank you for that, Mayor.
Bless your heart, Councilmember. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I hate to be the, I hate to be the rain on everybody's parade, but I have a couple of concerns about this. First and foremost, well, I really don't hate to be the rain, rain makes plants grow, so here I am. When we talk about this wording and this process, as I understand it, and I ask that you bear with me for just a moment, so I can get this on the table, as I understand it, the process that this has, has happened through is a standard process that has been utilized for a lot of different things on this council. So the process is, there was some consensus gained, then there was a move ahead, the City Manager kept in communication with the mayor and the Mayor Protem, the mayor and the Mayor Protem reported to reflect the will of the council, and we ended up at this decision. And so for me, as we're having this dialogue, it is really, the, the, the smaller portion of the dialogue is the wording, and the larger portion of the dialogue is how we ended up here. And so I'm very concerned that this is just a way to be able to circumvent the conversations about the how we got here, and it's, and it's really like a, like a Band-Aid on a, on a, on a gaping wound. And I'm, I'm not going to support this, I'm not going to support it for a number of reasons, but we're already $10,000 invested into this project with the removal and the, and the installment, so we're looking at potentially another 10, and I'm, I'm rounding up a little bit. We're looking at another 10. There's been no comment tonight about a timeline or some indicator as to what it would look like for a removal, and so there's something on the floor, but it, it's really very reminiscent of the first time we had the conversation. It feels to be in response to the outcry of a few members of our community, and doesn't seem to take into consideration the other members of the community who, who feel differently about it. And I will speak for the correspondence that I've received, and I've sat in on a couple of community watch meetings since we've done this, and asked the question, and been very direct about it. I'm not hearing from my district, now, they may be calling the mayor, because we both reside in the same district, but I'm not hearing from my constituents that this is what they are looking for from me. What they're looking for from this council is not necessarily, or is not at all, the reinstallment of that mural, there are some other things, but that's not the thing. But what they do want is a more clear, clearly defined understanding of how all of this works. And, and the original motion indicated that we didn't follow our process, and I just want to challenge that we've, we, it, the way that it rolled is specifically the process that has been established for, for this council and the decisions that we're making. So I, I, I just, you know, the, the kumbaya is nice, and, and the idea is, is, you know, great, but it's not, it, it, it does not seem to genuinely address the concerns that have been brought before us. And, and I, again, I think that it's very reminiscent of the last time we had this conversation, when we were in the midst of an uprising because of the death of Mr. Floyd, and, and we were being asked to respond in a way, and so this was our response, but without much, many parameters attached to what we were doing. And so I just challenge everybody that's in support of this to make sure that you do not duplicate the same scenario that you walked in, that we as a council walked into when we originally made this decision. Be very clear about what you're doing, be very clear about how you intend on handling this, because none of us know what tomorrow, next week, next month, we don't know what type of insurrection we may see in this nation that may cause it to be a bad time again. So just be very clear about what, what you're doing as we move forward, so that there's no room for confusion within our community, because our community cannot stand too many more stress, stress fractures like the ones that we've been receiving when it comes to racial tension, because this nation is boiling over, and we're probably not too far behind. And so I thank you for, for permitting me this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Many of us don't see the ru, the world quite as dark as that, but thank you for it. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, we've talked about it, council, let's vote. Oh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Quikley.
Oh, and Banks McLaughlin, I'm sorry. Councilman Dawkins, you haven't spoken on this round, have you? All right, Councilman Banks McLaughlin? All right, Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quikley, I want to thank Councilmember Davis for modifying the motion at the request of Councilmember here, and also Council Lady Ingram for agreeing to second. I was, I was complimenting our members of our armed forces, and I forgot about the great man married to Tisha Waddell, Larry Waddell, new granddaddy Larry Waddell, and new grandmama Tisha Waddell, United States Air Force, because I talked about all the great army guys. Okay, the, the second thing is, we're a very racially diverse city, so, Mr. City Manager, I kind of, I listened to your comments. My thing is, I'm fine with a permanent social justice plaza, but I do think we need to have areas for other organizations to put up temporary messages. So that, that would be my request. In effect, it'd be a Black Lives Do Matter, Social Justice Plaza, but then, you know, Blue Lives Matter, Red Lives Matter, Yellow Lives Matter, other organizations may come to us and request, because permanent government speech, we got to be very careful of it, opens us up to, yep, thank you, Mr. City Manager, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, this is for Councilmember Davis. Would you be willing for a friendly amendment, instead of putting a wording, Black Lives Do Matter, for substituting for Black Lives Matter?
I think we should leave as is, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Wright, you had something on this motion?
Uh, no, sir, I'm clear.
All right, council, let's vote. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Waddell.
Red.
Councilmember Wright.
Green.
Councilmember Davis.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that motion carries eight to two, I believe. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Ingram, here, and Kinston, those voting opposed, Councilmembers Banks McLaughlin and Waddell. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening.